Public Schools Board of Education meeting in order. Please raise your hands for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we will start with public participation. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak? Hearing none. Superintendent.
Okay, just another brief update on some of the summer projects we have going on in the facilities. Bill has been very active with his team. Brown has power back on. We went off the grid there for a while to change the switch gear. We had a ton of trees cleared, well, not that's relative. We have trees cleared in the areas of where the new playground area was identified. A lot of carpet being replaced, 12 classrooms at Hand, and we have a new water bottle filling station, two of them actually, on the second and third floor. We had one on the first floor, second and third floor now. Two of those are very popular with the kids. Jeffrey paved the playground areas and did a picnic table. It's about a 10-foot by 100-foot kind of area. Entry ramp has been rebuilt, painted the exterior doors, over 20 of them at Jeffrey. At Ryerson, we removed the built-in table in the pod hallways, which if you've been in Ryerson, there's some built-in structures there that have kind of made that difficult to do small group activities out there. And entry ramps were rebuilt over here at TCLC. Classroom is renovated up at Poulsen, rooms 20, 21, and 22. Some cabinets painted, removed the fixed tables, those old science rooms, new floor tile and new furniture, and some new flooring in the band room, the ornatory in the stage. Lots of activity. Facilities is a short window. We stayed in school late and we get back right, you know, beginning of September, so their window is short for open summer, but Bill's done a great job getting all these projects done. Technology, arts, big focus, obviously, the bus routes and so forth, but the, for art and transportation. But the technology area, getting the Chromebook plan out in place for the freshmen that are all getting the one-to-one program this year. So we've been working with the high school administration and some of the folks up there and getting that organized. Human resources, we're still hiring. We still had a couple of late resignations from some folks for foods or some took a different job, some took administrative jobs. We've had some turnover there, teaching ranks, and we were always filling parents up to $11 or two, so we have some of those parent professional openings as well. In special ed, we just ended our summer school a little over a week ago. A lot of kids were just painting them out this summer, just wrapped that up in the summer. And in curriculum, this building has been just pumping all summer long with science folks from kindergarten through to high school and our computer technology education. It's been a busy summer for us all around. Summer projects, any questions? Enrollment update. Typically, the kindergarten numbers are the ones that we look at the most. And right now, all of our sections, this is the October 14th, so today's update, every section has either 16 or 17 at the right now, which is right in the sweet spot for us for kindergarten. Overall, 147 kindergarteners and we projected 138. So we're right about that number. We will get enrollments in the 11th hour. It might not be kindergarten, but we get enrollments right up until the start of school and the beginning of school. As far as any areas of concern right now, as of today, we don't at the elementary level. It's been, for board members who are returning, have been here in the past, it's not uncommon to recommend an extra section to break up some of the larger class sizes that just happen through having three schools and students moving in. No concerns this summer at all. We have one, two, three, four, five sections with 21 students in it across various third and fourth grade classrooms in various schools. Besides that, we're looking at 20 and under, nice sections and nice and smooth numbers also across the three schools with good equity across the schools. So in good shape there. I give that kindergarten number, though, just bear in mind, we graduated 300 kids. So, you know, bringing in 147, we graduated 300. So just keep that in mind whenever we talk about enrollment. The last update, and I know Seth's going to talk about his facilities, but Katie and I met with Jean Fitzgerald and Tom Banish in our leadership group, and we talked about having a follow-up to a tri board. We talked about having first initial Q and A just based on the information that was presented. And we're looking for September 20 facilities committee meeting to host that here. And then in October, we would meet after that and have another tri board meeting circled back. So that's kind of where we are with that. Invite will go out for, I think, September 20 meeting by the end of the week this week.
With all the hiring and all that, do you have dates for letters to go out?
Letters for?
Classes.
Oh, I think we stuck to the 21st. I think that was the date from the outset. And we have one classroom teacher that we anticipate will be locked in before then. With Gail out, she does the last interview, so I may step in for her to do the final interview to make sure we can track.
Any other questions? You're good?
Yeah.
So committee request, please.
We met last Tuesday. The first item we talked about was interdisciplinary course proposals. The credit mastery-based assessment will be a new requirement from the state to replace the old capstone requirement. The exciting part about this is we can design this any way we want because the capstone did not allow for much of any flexibility and it was not great for all kids. Each student will need to earn one credit and can do this by taking multiple pathways or choices each would be a half credit or taking the same pathway twice. And students will be able to direct their choice of classes. All will be pass/fail, which will allow students to push themselves outside of their comfort zones with little risk. Gail was very excited about it. Sorry, she's not here today. And classes will be typical size and will be implemented for the 2021-2022 school year. Credit mastery-based assessment. And we'll have more information as it continues to be developed. Summer curriculum work update, Tom touched on it a little bit, but there has been intensive science and CTE rewriting along with social studies revisions for U.S. history and historical economics for the high school. The fifth and grade, fifth and sixth grade assessments for social studies have been tweaked a bit based on learnings from last year. And freshman and sophomore English continues to be refined, which is allowing for more student motivated reading and writing. The high school English has been a combination of training and curriculum writing. School reconfiguration and staffing update. This summer, the admin council, over the course of the summer, will have six days of retreats with a main focus around the school reconfiguration and planning process. We, as a planning committee, reviewed the GAMP chart and current statuses for all areas of the plan. We also did an enrollment update, a little bit more than what Tom just shared, just so everybody's aware. We had heard about the 147 enrolled kindergarteners so far, which equates to nine kindergarten sections, three at Island, four at Jeffrey, and two at Ryerson. In total, we have 44 elementary sections. And the total for the district K through 12, at least at this point, is 27 to 29. And the breakdown is Island 258, Jeffrey 359, Ryerson 198, Brown 387, Poulsen 438, and Hand 1089. These numbers could all continue to increase a little bit as people move in and out and enroll over the summer. That's where we were as of a week ago.
Any questions? Okay, moving on to personnel.
Negotiations are ongoing with Teamsters meeting and so we can know the report.
Thank you. Policy committee, Emily.
Yes, so we have several policies for you tonight. Several are on our second reading. I'll briefly go through them and we have one for a third reading and vote. Bylaw 9450, you'll see in your packets, the version that the policy committee tonight voted to amend the proposal as shown here in your packet, based on feedback from last week's special workshop and board input. This is, of course, subject to additional feedback as tonight is the second reading. So we are continuing to take comments on that. Policy 3150, medical reimbursement for special education students is also here tonight for a second reading, it's in your packet. I think everyone here has heard the overview of it. I can answer any questions if you have any. Policy 5125.1, health and medical records is also here for second reading. Policy number 6161.3, comparability of services, second reading tonight. Policy number 6090.1, IEP and special education program, for a second reading. Policy 5144.4, physical exercise and discipline of students, for a second reading. Policy number 6162.51, survey of students or student privacy, also second reading. Those policies, other than bylaw 9450, are all based on recommendations from CAE due to recent legislative changes or updates and modifications. And then finally, we have tonight, policy 4141, social networking, which is before the board tonight for a third and final reading. We had our second reading of this policy on April 24th, and we canceled our May policy meeting and then it just sort of got lost in the shuffle. So it's back tonight for a third and final reading. As you may recall, this is regarding staff, social media use to exercise good judgment and the inappropriate, you can read it in your packets. Content posting are subject to, you know, consent. There's more details in the policy if you have any questions about that. So we will have to vote on that, but I don't know if we want, if people have any questions or comments about any of those in particular or if it makes more sense for us to vote on that third reading first perhaps? What do you think is most?
We'll do that during the consent. Yeah, okay. During the, oh, good, that's on my list. Yep, got it. Okay. Any comments about Emily's report?
I just wanted to point out briefly that, so we had some really good qualitative discussion at the policy committee level on that report that is coming up for a vote, I mean, on that policy that's coming up for a vote tonight. And the main focus of our discussion was surrounding kind of like the constitutional limitations of free speech versus contractual constraints on free speech and not wanting to be too harsh in our proclamations and our provisions so that we wouldn't attract good teachers and good talent, but at the same time, wanting to protect our students and, you know, and communities from, you know, people who might use their position as a teacher to, you know, to go on a soapbox in modern social media. So it was really an interesting and fascinating discussion and thank you for leading that and bringing it back.
I think it's in a good place now.
Yeah, can I add, you know, 4141, having observed the policy committee work on it, I think did a great job. I think it's, I think it reads better now than the one from CAE. I think it's written more fairly to the employees and it's more inclusive and there's a lot of thought wanted to us. Good job.
Thank you, everyone. It was a lot, a team effort. I do want to just bring up for 9450, some of the revisions that you see in your packet. I know there's a lot of color and highlighting and I appreciate it being printed in color so we could see that.
Thank you, Andy.
Yes, thank you, Andy.
Did you just tell them for us?
So just so everyone's aware, what you have in your packet in red is the original revisions. And then what is in yellow highlighting or blue is what were sort of amendments that came out of the special workshop last week and board feedback. The revised version in here, the three main portions of it are keeping the facilities committee as an ad hoc committee, but listing it in the bylaws along with its responsibility so that its work is quantified somewhere. Amend, expand, and retitle the planning committee to the curriculum and student development committee, establishing a new communication committee, and then also, under duties of standing committees, establishing a process for tasks not regularly assigned to a particular committee to go through the board chairperson. There have been lots of discussions and lots of questions about where certain items might fit or where they may not fit and how we go about that. We discussed that at length today in policy. We sort of talked about trying to keep it general and broad enough to be inclusive of a lot of things while not being very specific with the bullet points. And I can talk more offline or with people about specifically where things fit in, but it seems that everything that has been done by planning either can fit there or maybe is done in a different way in collaboration with other committees. And I can go through all the details at another time if that's more.
So will you be sending the comments from tonight's policy meeting or are you going to go through it now?
Whatever people prefer. I don't know what's more appropriate for the process. I can share a rapport. I do think there was some good comments. We discussed tonight particular changes to add some language and move things around. And so what I was thinking was to incorporate those into some notes and show that our people wanted, you know, well in advance of that next policy meeting in two weeks. But I can answer specific questions if people want.
I'm just wondering how much time people want to spend on it or even talk more.
It's a night agenda, so if people had comments, I think now is a good time. It was, I thank you, Emily, for spearheading the discussion tonight. I think it was, I know I came late, but was, seemed to be fruitful and collaborative and really good discussion. So if anybody has questions, based, I think tonight we should keep it, well, no. I think, if anybody has questions, I think now is a good time, right?
I should point out that there were a couple people who were unable to be at the policy meeting tonight who are not policy committee members, but who wanted their concerns and thoughts to be heard. And I commend Emily for bringing those forward in their entirety. It fomented a great discussion. And, you know, we do have another bylaw that requires us to review the bylaws every year. And I think it's, you know, it's been a long time since we've honored that. And so there are perhaps more changes than we deal with in a typical year, but we're dealing with bylaws that haven't been changed in quite a while, so they're a bit crusty and in need of some change. And I think there's been some open discussion that has been good. You know, it's ultimately going to be good for the board. So thank you for sponsoring that.
Sure, I'm glad. I appreciate everyone's feedback. It was helpful tonight. We discussed certain things like where do teacher evaluations go and where do report cards go and sort of thinking about some things that are done by the administration with, you know, reporting to us and some things that are inclusive, for example, special education, for example, would really be part of programmatic and curriculum initiatives, which are represented currently in the curriculum and student development bullet points here. We did talk about the technology plan in particular. And one thing that was suggested was to differentiate non-instructional technology to be under the purview of the facilities, ad hoc facilities committee. But then for the curriculum and student development committee to review instructional technology plans that are, to provide for district programmatic and curricular initiatives. So it was one thing that came about where that technology plan lives and it sort of made sense to tease out the hardware from the curriculum-oriented things. So that was one comment that we can put forward and write, and I don't want to make any changes to what you have in front of you now, but that was one thing that was clarified tonight. We also discussed in particular enrollment projections and how a lot of that, there's actually policies in place requiring the enrollment and class sizes that already exist. Then we get enrollment projections from Tom so that that would be staffing development is really around new programmatic initiatives but not existing things because we have policies in place that require class sizes and staffing. So it would be more that the curriculum and student development committee would make recommendations for staffing related to new or revised programmatic initiatives in particular. Other things that we want to share with the group or any other questions?
Well, one, another thing we discussed was the general proposition that we have to guard against that general board tendency that all boards do, which is to claim some more authority than is due to the board and that is required by the board. So we have to be careful when developing duties lists and responsibilities lists for the various committees to not overtake duties and responsibilities that are by law or by policy delegated to the district itself. And that's always, it's always a source of some tension because there's the, there's the natural inclination to want to assert control and management of things. But we're fortunate that we have strong management and we have strong oversight as a board. And if we're not happy with the management, you know, there are avenues for us to address that. So that was one of the discussions that we also held surrounding the division of duties and responsibilities among the various subdivisions of the board.
And so we weren't at the workshop, but one of the things we talked about too was really employing the committee as a whole more as, as an option, you know, an option to discuss things or bring things to the full board table during our meetings to, to address some of those items. So that not everything might, you know, specifically fall under a certain committee, but that as a committee as a whole, at any time, things can be brought to the board table.
Or go to the executive committee. It can be a conduit to the other committee.
And that was one thing that I think we want to continue to think about for those, the duties, under the duties of standing committees. If it's, we want to be consistent with our bylaws. Often we just refer to as the board chairperson, but we discussed the special workshop last weekend and tonight, that would be better to be reviewed by the executive committee, like those sort of other tasks that haven't yet been assigned a bucket be reviewed by the board chairperson or the executive committee. And that thing, I think we still need to sort out what makes sense. I think in practicality, it might be the same thing, but in order for the bylaws to all be consistent, so we need to, I think you need to think about that too.
One other item that was raised, so I think in the original proposal, obviously, in the original proposal, facilities was proposed to be a permanent committee. After our workshop, everyone left an agreement that we will leave it open as, as stands as an ad hoc committee. One item that was raised, which I think coincides with our need to review everything once a year, but to be explicit about in here that the policy committee would review the standing of that committee again in June 2019, a year out from the proposal. So, 2019, am I right? I'm always going to get that wrong this year. So that there is some definition, which I think was unclear, especially to me as a new board member, about when that might be reviewed. So let's just look at it again.
I thought it was supposed to be October 2020.
That's what it ends, that would be the annual review.
Temporary committee end.
Like the rest of the bylaws.
That we just sort of review the work to date a year from now. And I feel like that that may have come up when we developed a facilities committee, and I don't think it originally made it into the presentation that we gave, but that this is sort of subject to ongoing review and approval, like what's, you know, what is the committee producing and what are the outcomes of the committee? So it would just be saying, we'll, we'll continue to review this and look at it now. So it was another suggestion that came up. Thank you. Great.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Keep your comments coming, we'll continue to, um, yes. Finance committee.
We have nothing to report.
Are they in song? Nope, somewhere vacay. Facilities committee.
Okay, so as folks will recall, we had a tri board meeting on July 17th. That was mostly called for two purposes. One was to introduce, formally introduce and officially introduce the other two main boards, the board of finance and the board of selectmen, to the 10-year master facilities plan that the board had passed, that this board had passed. And secondarily, to kind of spark a community discussion that recognizes the rather large numbers we're talking about and recognizes that maybe there's room to do something differently than, than just spending $100 million and ending up with the same thing we have now, only in further disrepair 10 years down the road. So there was a very good response from the other boards. We're looking forward to seeing if the commitments and sentiment remains. But we're encouraged. And so the committee met again this evening. The superintendent reported on a joint leadership meeting as it related to facilities. And as Tom mentioned a moment ago, the recommendation was made to hold a Q and A workshop on the facilities master, 10-year master facilities plan on September 20th, and then followed by another tri board meeting in October. And we received a brief presentation from a solar company that introduced us to a novel concept of how to implement potential solar power for the Green Hill campus. We received Bill McMinn's facilities report, which mostly consisted of a listing of the standard maintenance and cleaning that's going on in the schools this summer, which you heard part of in the superintendent's report a few moments ago. We received a brief finance committee report from our finance committee liaison, Gatelyn Colley. Expertly delivered, I might say. And we also briefly discussed the upcoming annual facilities report to the board, which is to occur in September. Our hope is to deliver the report at the September 4th board meeting. Don't know if we'll be able to make that deadline that we self-imposed, but we're going to go for it. That's, that's it. Unless there are any questions.
Any questions?
Moving on, board member comments. I have one. I was able to make it to the board selectmen meeting yesterday. I know you all were invited as well to see, they were, the presentation on the, or on the strategic plan initiative.
The town's strategic.
Thank you, that the town is working on. They have employed a consulting firm out of, I think it's Ohio. I'm not positive. And to engage with stakeholders regarding their hopes and desires for a strategic plan for the town moving forward. And a former board member, Chris Perselli. Am I pronouncing that right?
Perselli.
What he said. Was there to give the presentation. He's working as a liaison between this consulting firm and the town and board selectmen to help facilitate interviews and public forums and the like to engage with the other boards as well as the community about what their vision would be or their hopes would be for strategic plans for the town. As far as the board of ed is concerned, they will be getting in touch with us. They had mentioned during the presentation that they would be requesting interviewing with two of us. So we can talk a little bit more about that. I would like it to be all of us personally. I'm not sure how flexible they are, but I'm happy to push that. I think it's important. That said, I think we all feel pretty confident with our tenure facilities plan and we should continue, you know, letting away of that as we go forward. So if anybody has any other questions, it was a very brief presentation. There's more to come from, from what I was told. So I'll try and keep everybody in the loop as much as I can, but yeah.
My understanding is that we have an employed paid town planner. Was there anything discussed at that meeting about why we have an additional liaison appointed when we have a town planner who's getting paid to do that?
I had that same question. It was not addressed during the presentation yesterday. And he wasn't there, the town planner was not.
And he wasn't there. The town planner was not in the room.
He wasn't?
Was not at the presentation.
Interesting.
Okay. Stay tuned on that. Audience response? Consent agenda, okay. So we have, I need a motion to approve the budget expenditure as of August 10th, 2018.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, to approve the consent agenda, sorry. Thank you all.
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
I'd just like to, as always, call out the donations. It's a tradition of mine. There were three great donations in this one. $1,740.02 from Stop &amp; Shop A+ Rewards for student resources at Jeffrey Elementary School. There's a donation in the amount of $5,000 from the Jeffrey Elementary School PTO for classroom resources. And a donation in the amount of $8,343 from the Island Avenue PTO to assist with field trips for the 1819 school year. These are great, wonderful, and appreciated donations. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So I need a motion to approve the minutes of the July 17th.
We're going to take a vote on it.
Oh, duh. Thank you. I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Thank you. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the July 17th meeting.
So moved.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, abstentions? I have to abstain with two abstentions? Can it pass?
Abstentions, aye.
What's last one? Yeah, okay. Motion carries.
Yeah, if you have a court, it could be two, that's okay.
Motion to approve the minutes of the August 6th special education workshop. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Abstentions?
Two.
Three.
I'm three, sorry.
Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the list of technology equipment to be E-wasted.
Interested.
It's all right here.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
What is E-wasted?
Thank you.
Ah, the old phone books, old technology devices.
How they dispose?
E-waste is how we do it. We have a process we go through where it's either recycled. It doesn't just go in the dumpster.
Yeah, okay.
And everything is already all cataloged and coded, so we have to account for that, yeah.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Is there any old business to discuss? Future agenda items? I'm thinking this would be a good space too, if there was something that doesn't fit in a bucket. We always breeze past this part, but if you have future agenda items, that would be a good time. Sorry, meetings and dates of appointment are attached. And now I need a motion to enter to executive.
I'm sorry, real quick, we probably should mention that there was a September 18th Board of Ed meeting on the schedule that has to be moved to September 20th.
Just facilities, not Board of Ed?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes, facilities committee meeting. It needs to be moved to the 18th, from the 18th through the 20th, because that's a non-school day.
There was also another change made on that calendar that wasn't on the original calendar, and that was the 28th. So there was a date burned in the calendar that hasn't hit us up to here.
Yeah, that was a few months ago. That was actually the beginning of June.
It wasn't on the calendar.
No, no, right, it wasn't added. You're right. But there was emails sent, that I think there were several dates proposed. And I think Laura just didn't add it to our Outlook calendar.
No, it wasn't on any calendar. I brought it to your attention and it was put on the most recent calendar.
Right, but it was proposed by email before that. We got a group of what the most people could get to, but it just didn't get to the calendar.
But we should add that as another note of...
It hasn't been added still, so...
No, no, no.
It should be added in here because it doesn't...
Oh, I see. There's another, it's the policy committee meeting on the 28th.
When we're, when we're talking about dates, it's important. I'm just raising it as a, this is important to note.
Sure.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. I think, yeah, and there's something going on with Outlook too, but we'll, we'll work on it. Thank you. So now I need a motion to enter into executive session to discuss district security plan.
So moved. Second.